Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon, although as we're getting later in the year, it's more like good evening, isn't it? But welcome to the September 20th, 2021 meeting of Dorchester County Council. And we will start, as we always do, with the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Wes, Ms. Hallman, please lead us.
Smile our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us since the last meeting. This evening, we ask you to provide wisdom and knowledge to this council as we carry out our duties and responsibility for Dorchester County. We also ask you to protect our first responders and leaders at all levels. And as I close, Heavenly Father, we ask that you be with our chairman as he guide this council meeting. We ask all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Hallman. Next on the agenda, our request to address council. And for those that were at our last meeting, when we had 26 people, we have zero tonight.
Oh, darn.
Wait a minute, let me go film. That was not a challenge, by the way. Thank you, Mr. Lewis, but no, okay. Next, we have adoption of minutes from the September 7th, 2021 County Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise their hand.
Aye.
And it is six in favor, one absent. Next, we have third reading of an ordinance to authorize the execution and delivery of an equipment lease purchase agreement in order to provide for the acquisition of certain radio equipment for the sheriff's office and other departments to provide the terms and conditions of such lease purchase agreement, to provide for the granting of a security interest to secure all obligations under the lease purchase agreement, to authorize the execution and delivery of all documents necessary or appropriate for the consummation of such lease purchase agreement, and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Simu.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Ward, do we need to speak to this, anything on that? We good? Pretty self-evident, okay. All right. All in favor, please raise their hand.
Aye.
Again, six in favor, one absent. Correspondents?
Mr. Chairman and counsel, those items have been provided as they were received.
Thank you very much. Now, what we lacked in request to address council will make up for with a multitude of guests who we're happy to have with us tonight. We will start with Mr. Brian Lynch, Senior Manager for Environmental Resources and Water Systems, Santee Cooper, with an update on the Lake Marion Regional Water System. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and counsel. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I have a brief presentation on just where we are with the Santee Cooper Regional Water System, our Lake Marion system in particular. With that, we'll first take a look at the water system. It's been in operation since 2008, as most of you are aware, currently serving a population of just under 3,000. And the agency that makes up all the members that are served by the water system includes Dorchester County, Town of Santee, Orangeburg, Calhoun, and Berkeley Counties as a whole. As we look to the future, the projections that were provided by the agency members show a dramatic increase in demand on this water system coming up over the next five years, almost a 700% increase in demand. So we're going to see a lot more water flowing from the system. That's a large part due to the industrial economic development done in Dorchester County, along with some of the other connections we have with other towns and counties. So we're going to see a dramatic increase in that, which will trigger a plant expansion in 2024 that is part of the long-term, five-year plan with the setup with the agency members. So we will look to expand from 8 million gallon day plant to a 12 million gallon day plant in 2024. Additional expansion will happen much later out, around 2040. We'll need to expand again according to current projections. A lot of this is, like we said, is triggered based on new reaches or new lines and infrastructure we're putting in the ground. Two of the main ones we're working on now are in Dorchester County, the Winding Woods Elevated Tank that was recently bid out and awarded. We expect to see construction start on that project. Probably by the end of the month, right now, the Corps is going through all of their plans and sorting through all that. But we do, the contract has been awarded, and we should see some action either very late September, early October on that site. The Winding Woods Reach, which will connect us from Harleyville all the way down to the St. George area, that reach was bid out, and we expect to have bids back by the end of September. So we do expect to see that contract awarded right at the end of September, early October range as well. So we've estimated that reach about $14, a little over $14 million. We're hopeful things have improved since the last time we bid something out, but we will wait and see what the Corps comes up with when the bids come in. Additional reaches that we have going on, so in the next five years, we have a fairly aggressive plan. We've got about 46 miles of transmission line in the ground right now, and we want to put about another 74 miles of transmission line in the ground. So this includes a lot of different areas to serve all the different counties. But in addition to the Winding Woods and Winding Woods Tank that we talked about already, there's the Shady Grove Reach in Dorchester County is on that plan. So we'll reach again from Harleyville out to the Shady Grove area, and then other reaches that are, sir, Berkeley County, Calhoun County, Orangeburg County, and the Town of Santee. And counsel, that is all I had, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions? Mr. Lynch, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And probably would say this, just thank you for the collaboration, which, over the years, has brought us to the point now where it is our time, Mr. Ward.
Yes, yes. As you know.
Thank you so much.
He's a driving force for that agency, so we do appreciate all his efforts and all the collaborations.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Tracy Todd, Chairman of the Dorchester County Accommodations Tax Committee, requests for approval of the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation for funding allocations for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Good evening.
Good evening. Good to see you again. And I just want to say thank you for all of you for your service. Vice Chairman Byers isn't here, but I've heard him say many times that, you know, you guys can't hide behind any of your votes. Appreciate what you do, your service for the county, and thanks for the opportunity that Chairman, Councilman Friedle has given me to serve on the ATAX Committee. We met on Thursday, August 19th, down in St. George. Had a great tour of the Rosenwall School beforehand, and we really appreciate the opportunity to see that and that investment that the county's been making over the years. At 6 o'clock, we met. We have five members present, three new members joined the committee this year, which was, which is great to have some new folks join us. One was on the phone with us, so we were only missing one member. We thankfully had almost the same amount of revenue that we normally would have to give out, even in kind of a strange COVID year. We were expecting to have less, so that was, that was nice. We were able to fund, some funding for almost, for almost every project, short of one. We had good participation from the community to come out and, and speak to their programs. So we were able to ask questions and get, get answers from that. And I think either Daniel or Jessica sent you the, the report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or do my best to for the, anything specific for any of the projects.
Any questions?
I was just going to say, only one, only one project out of the whole bunch did not get funding, and that was because we were, we had some questions about how it would generate tourists and hotel stays, and also the organization didn't show up to answer questions. So we've tried to get them to come, they didn't come last year, and it didn't come this year again. So that was really the main reason why that one organization didn't receive any funding.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Hallman.
Has anybody reached out to, where you tried to call them?
We did last year. They didn't show up last year. We reached out and said, we really want you to show up, and, you know, if there's questions, it really helps a lot. If there's anything in your application that's unclear, it's very helpful if you show up. Their application was very short on details.
Okay, so is there a letter or something that goes back to the individuals that was not approved, explaining to them why they did not receive any funds?
We sent out letters to applicants to the public and asked, we asked for some feedback, and they also committed to our commission and asked for some recommendations, letters that I get telling them what was awarded and if more funds were awarded, just in a letter. I also sent out a note to all the applicants, to tell them we were being able to follow the question.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I've got a couple of things and questions and comments and everything else in regards. I'm kind of curious what, what the county can do and the possibility of even looking at this ATAX money to make certain. As I go through this list, and not necessarily indicting anybody, but I go through this list, if, if the, if they were given the county whatever, whatever the total amount is, $62,282, and we divided that money up year after year after year between her law firm and mortgage equity partners and Southern Real Estate, Carolina Real Estate, okay, and Lowe's, everybody out there in the audience would question. We know that, that that would be the question, and it would be a legitimate question. And year after year, we end up with the same folks. So we've got to figure out a way to make certain with this ATAX money, if the goal is to improve.
Tourism.
Tourism, doing the same thing over and over again, and not trying to encourage other people to be involved in helping them. So if we need to help this committee, who, Juneteenth is who it was, they've come before us before, they came before us asking for money, I know. If their application is not correct, proper, whatever it may be, to qualify, and maybe their activity isn't, then we ought to be able to sit down with them and figure out what it is. Because I can probably, I mean, I read all of the details on this. I mean, I've got all kinds of questions. I don't understand, I'd still kind of like to understand, and I don't know who can answer the question, how, and Tracy, it's, again, I'm not beating up on you, you just happen to be the chairman and the person here, but.
Sure.
Every one of these got a percentage less than their request, except for Middleton. Middleton got the full request. Middleton, and when you look at the revenue and the expenses, they're the ones that probably may not need it as much as, say, and again, I don't know if there's anybody in here, I'm looking from the History Center in here, and again, I'm not picking, you happen to be the, I mean, I hate to use you as an example, but I mean, it's just.
Well, can I say, can I, can I just say that?
Yeah, please.
This is not a need-based program, for one thing. It is about bringing tourists to the, to the area, right? And if you looked at where the, where the revenue actually was generated, you might, you might understand too.
And you said that every time I've asked these questions. So I understand that part. That's, that's no shock. But, but again, I understand it's not a need-based program, but if we're, if the opportunity arises for us to generate additional ATAX by helping to fund other smaller events, one of the perfect ideas that staff came up with to me was, a lot of these little advertising events in here, a lot of these opportunities to bring people in is figure out an ad hoc committee or something from a standpoint of staff to reach out to some of these smaller events to kind of pull resources together to rent, you know, rent an amount of time on billboards or something, and rotate through the different groups, or to add all the different groups up, or have a, you know, here's September in Dorchester County that we plant in the middle of, you know, Lexington County, or however that case may be. And I think, because if we always get the same amount of money all the time, and we're always doing the same thing, and I guess it's better than getting nothing, but the opportunity for us to look at this in a more proactive, more aggressive term is to try to figure out how to get that Juneteenth committee to, to, you know, see if it'll, and again, it may not ever qualify, but to give them that opportunity to show them what they're doing. You guys probably have some pretty good software and accountants and everything else that help draw all your data in that certainly support what you're doing, and that's not an indictment. That, that's a good thing to have for you guys. But I know on some of these smaller groups, the ability to try to help them as we can, I'm not saying do all the work for them, but at least give them a guide to allow them to know what they can do to qualify for money if, in fact, their event qualifies. And that's a big if. I keep going back to that if, but that's kind of the, I think that's an opportunity. And again, to maybe bulk these, you know, group all these small advertising things together and try to get something that more bang for our buck, or something a little bit more impactful than maybe some of it. I mean, you look at some of these things, and you've got to question with the money that we give them, and now I'm definitely not talking about Middleton when you hear me say this, is, you know, it's, we're donating $50 a visitor based on the out, the visitors that have come more than 50 miles to the county. Or in some cases, we're donating much more than that with a number that they're saying that have come from out of the county. I mean, I, I look at those and say, okay, are we doing the right thing? Maybe Middleton needed 12,000 instead of 10,000. Again, I'm going back that way. So I mean, just looking at those numbers, and I appreciate them going through, and everybody gets a little bit of something, but making certain that, from a critical standpoint, can we, can we pool these resources together and be more impactful? Because it's all about next year's revenue stream and the year after's revenue stream, and trying to get this thing boosted up so everybody gets something, at least that, that deserves to have something. Again, let me qualify that. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Hallman.
I was going to ask this of Ms. Karah, do they advertise? Y'all put it in the paper, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so it is advertised so people can see it before.
Jessica, I'm sorry. You said a couple of things, could you come up and, sorry to make you come up, but just, I don't, I don't know if it got picked up. Sorry, Tracy.
I know.
Thanks. I'm sorry to do, but you had first, you had first mentioned, I don't know if the audience heard, just, but tell about the process, how you reached out to previous folks and then thereafter, number one, and then what you just said, please.
So each year, when it's a time for accommodations tax, we put an ad in the paper, we put it in the Somerville Journal Scene, as well as the Eagle Record. And then I send out letters to applicants who have received funding in the past, saying, it's that time for you to submit your final report for the previous year, and here's the application for this year if you'd like to apply for funding again. So if they've received funding in the past, they get an application. And then we put it in the paper. And then once the committee makes recommendations and council approves those recommendations, I send out a letter to all of the applicants, saying, council has approved this funding amount for this purpose, along with a check. We send those out in October. And for anyone who did not receive funds, we send out a letter to them as well, saying that no funds were, you know, or they might have, you know, a lot of them request more than what they received. So we send a letter along with the check to explain to them what was, what was allocated. Did I miss anything?
Let's see, did that cover the second part of that? Is that, okay. All right, thank you so much.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bailey.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the report as a submitted, but, but they go back, you know our concerns, for next year.
I would, I'd really like to hear them, and I would, I would, I would really appreciate all of you reaching out to your representatives. I made a point to call mine before the meeting and, and talk to him about it, and see if there's any, you know, any issues, is there any dialogue we can have? Is there any issues that he wants me to bring to the meeting? And that's a good time for you all to have some dialogue with your representatives. But we certainly have been trying to get more applications, more interest, more, we've been improving the application process. We've done that the past few years, and I really appreciate the fact that, that we had three new members on the committee this year. So that's, that's a good thing.
Okay, we had a, we have a motion. Did we get a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Okay, and this takes us back to discussion. Any additional discussion?
I, I do have one piece of discussion, and I'm sorry, 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 George. The only one I question from a standpoint that I need, wanted to try to understand, Tracy, and I don't know, is the Longleaf Productions, when I read what they're doing, I know it's an out-of-state organization that's providing, and I wanted to understand because the language was a little bit vague in what they're going, they're going to, are they giving Rosenwall School the movie? Are they charging Rosenwall? I'm trying to understand that. Are we giving them, and I don't remember what it was, $4,000, obviously they asked for 15, we gave them four, so if I'm looking at that right, are they, are they providing some of this? Are they providing it at a lower cost? Or they, I mean, do you understand?
They're donating it.
Okay.
And it's beautiful. It's absolutely beautiful. It's top-notch.
Rosenwall School project, for me, if I'd have been on the committee, I might have put a little bit more into it, because we've got one of five, four?
Very few.
Yeah, there's not many that, in its existence. So this has been a more than worthy project, and I know it was, Mr. Davis is, one of his projects too, so it's very much worthy. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And again, six in favor, one absent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Daniel Prentice, Dorchester County Deputy Administrator/CFO, recognition of staff for receiving the National Procurement Institute's MPI 2021 Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award. Mr. Prentice.
Good evening. So I have one of the fun opportunities to get up here and recognize staff for some of their accomplishments, and we've come before you in the past and presented the Financial Reporting Award from the Government Finance Officers Association for our comprehensive annual financial report, and we've shown you the award for the budget report. This is something new this year. Our Purchasing Services Division took some initiative and went out for the AEP Award through the National Procurement Institute and put together the package that was required to submit for that award, and we were pleased to find out that we were one of 182 agencies in the United States and one of 42 counties in the United States, the only in South Carolina to receive the award. So good honor for these guys, a lot of work that went into it. They developed a business user manual, essentially showing entities how they can do business with the county, put together a new procurement procedures manual that's used for internal users and how they interface with the purchasing office, and then really just kind of went through and made sure that all of our contracts, standard forms, templates for RFPs, everything that we do on a routine basis is available. It's standardized, and it meets our current specifications for the work that we're doing for different projects that we have going on. And of course, we have a lot with all various capital projects and different solicitations that are going out throughout the year. So I wanted to pick on the staff, they're here this evening, so if you please stand for me. I wanted to introduce everybody to you, since there's some new faces. But second over, Mr. John Tiger, he's the Purchasing Services Manager. He's been with the county since April of 2020. He came to us right in the beginning of the pandemic and moved here from St. Louis County, Missouri, where he served in a similar capacity before coming to Dorchester County. So he has taken a lot of initiative and spearheading some of these efforts as he took over from Rebecca Dantzler, who was promoted into the Capital Projects Manager position and really set the stage for a lot of the work that's been accomplished. You have Ms. Deena Cohn, who's been with the county, I won't say a number of years, but she came into the purchasing office after being in the IT Department and the Facilities Department, and a wealth of knowledge of being a buyer before becoming a purchasing agent. So we appreciate everything that she brings to the organization. Joyce Sandella, she's one of our admins in purchasing office, and she manages archives. So record-keeping and all the documentation that goes behind purchasing is a critical part of what they do, but we also now have somebody that's staffing the archives room downstairs in the Kenny Wagner Building. So when people are coming in and bringing records into that facility or taking records out of the facility, there's now a documentation process that exists for ensuring that archives is managed, and that we don't have things going in there that don't need to be in there, and that we're purging things when the State Department of Archives and History says that they can be purged, so that we're not keeping a glut of records. And then lastly, Mr. Tim Walling, he's been with the county for a couple of years now, going on?
May of '20.
May of '20, okay. So going on a couple of years, but he joined us, worked for the federal government in a procurement capacity. So a lot of great knowledge, a lot of tenure within the organization, and it's been exciting to see what they've been able to do and how they've grown. And really, when John joined us, that was when all of these capital projects kind of spun off, as Rebecca was promoted into the Capital Projects Manager role, and we had all of the solicitations go out for the Parks and Library G O Bond-related projects. And so it's been great to have this team behind those efforts, and they're the folks that you don't often see, but they're the ones that make it happen. And then, of course, be remiss if I didn't call Jessica out again, but she is the supervisor of that office in her capacity as Director of Business Services, so.
Stand up.
Really, yeah, stand up again, there you go. Really proud of this team and all that they do, and just wanted to take the opportunity to recognize them for winning the award. So thank you. Thank you for coming up front, and hope I didn't embarrass you too much.
So are we moving on now to the next one?
Sir.
Okay, next, again, Mr. Prentice, who will give us the presentation of the August 2020, August 2021 Monthly Budget Report and Updates on Capital Projects.
All right, so we are second month into the fiscal year. Of course, you approved carryover at the last meeting, and so when you see the September report, you'll see those carryover amounts post in each budget report. But for the general fund for the month of August, the total budget for the general fund is $69.1 million. Year-to-date revenue is $2.5 million, and expenditures of $10.2 million. So business license is about 33% within its category, and EMS charges for services roughly 36%. We did make our intergovernmental payments for the first quarter last month, and then also had insurance premiums paid out in August for the year to the Insurance Reserve Fund. In the capital fund, total budget of $5.3 million, revenues of $82,000, and expenditures of $796,000. We'll start to see over the next couple of months expenditures post for a lot of our vehicle acquisitions, and we've fortunately had some luck this year working with Fleet to get our vehicles in by buying down slots from the factory before things shut down. So that's what's posting to date. In the fire fund, $8,000,019, budget, revenue of $102,000. And of course, we don't have quarterly collections from those service contracts anymore, as the property taxes for our rural municipalities are collected on the tax bills, and expenditures of $1.2 million. Water and Sewer Fund, total budget of $38.2 million, revenues of $4.8 million. You have a majority of that being charges for services on monthly billing, but then there's also the $1 million that County Council approved coming in from impact fees to fund the Edisto Tribal Council Elevated Storage Tank, and expenses of $2.9 million. On Water and Sewer Impact Fees, budget of $4.7 million, revenues of $2.4 million, and expenses of $1.1 million. And of that $1.1 million, that million was being transferred into the Water and Sewer Fund for that previously mentioned project. Stormwater Fund, total budget of $4,100,000, revenues of $108,000, and expenses of $270,000. And lastly, the Solid Waste Fund, budget of $8.3 million, revenues of $26,000, and expenses of $519,000. And of course, with both of those, all of those are through the tax bills, so we'll see most of those collections in January. That concludes the budget report. If you have any questions, then I have the capital projects for you.
Any questions?
All right. So start out with vertical construction. For Ashley River Park, floodproofing for the two buildings that are receiving those accommodations was underway, and other buildings are progressing as planned. We have had some weather delays, but landscaping work has commenced and had the occasion to visit with Mr. Ward and some other staff Friday before, I guess Friday before last, and walk the site when sod was being delivered. So we're starting to see things pick up that out there. But weather permitting, we're looking at substantial completion in mid-October, maybe a little bit later. Ashley River Park, Rose Brock Park Connector, working on finishing up the master plan to cross Bacon's Bridge with a subgrade tunnel and connect Rose Brock Park. Meeting with DOT is being scheduled to discuss preliminary issues. Davis Bailey Park, remaining assets are being entered into the system, insurance items are being covered, and the dedication plaque has been installed on the concessions building. Final payments have also been made to the contractors on that project. Station 17 on Sandridge Road, had a meeting in July with DCFR and Design/Build, and we're awaiting a proposed scope of work for Design/Build for Design Services for Phase 1. awaiting a proposed scope of work for Design Build for Design Services for Phase One to meet our needs. Dorchester Palls, they have received all the information on the piece of property that they asked for due diligence on, on Highway 17A, and we're waiting for their information from them on that. EOC Project, we're continuing to hold our OAC meetings, block work is ongoing. We do have some supply chain issues with materials that have delayed the project schedule slightly. IT, EMD, and Administration are working with contractor on access control, data connections, furniture layouts. And understand today that Mr. Formasano, the dispatch team and our IT Director went to Sumter County and looked at some furniture and we'll be making some other visits in the near future to make final decisions on the dispatch consoles. Human Services, building renovation, just a few punch list items, and we're putting out the solicitation for the second floor renovations in the next week. K-9 Kinnels, contractors on schedule with a date of October 14th for completion. Interior floor and exterior apron have been poured and ceiling work is underway. Latson Road Fire and EMS, we're just awaiting a geotech report on that. Solicitation documents are being coordinated with procurement. If you have any questions, have the right people here in the room. And the bid should be published by the end of September. Law Enforcement Complex renovation, you do have an item on the agenda this evening to consider some additional funding for that project that would be eligible for the American Rescue Plan. Pending that decision, then we'll move forward with final value engineering and design changes to put that out for bid. The development of 500 North Main Street, we're scheduling the next focus group meetings for early October and then the plan will be presented to council in the month that follows for feedback. North Charleston Branch Library, proposal between Edifice and Leolio is underway and actually we sent that off to Edifice today for execution. So that should be coming back in the next week and we'll get that project moving forward. GPA is working on a subdivision plat for the Oakbrook Library to separate the retained acreage for Somerville CPW from the park being purchased by the county. And we are working on the traffic impact analysis and the geotechnical exploration came back last week on Thursday. Oakbrook Tiff Sports Complex, talking about moving forward in a different direction with the YMCA, so that due diligence work is still underway. The streetscaping project, the traffic impact analysis is underway with Seaman White size and their contractor. Pine Trace Natural Area, schematic design of the master plan is underway and we're working on the bike trail that goes through that park at a meeting on September 10th. Ridgeville Library, still in negotiations with the Heritage Center on our preferred location on their site. Summers Corner Fire and EMS, we have determined an alternate site and are working with planning and zoning and Lennar and County Administrators Office to determine if that site will be feasible about 200 yards up Clayfield Trail from the previous site. And we'll begin designing the civil for that site once we determine that'll work. Somerville Branch Library, we have a test fit for the downtown site at the Y property and we're working with the YMCA on an appraisal for that parcel. Swan Drive Park, design is underway and on schedule. And those are the updates that I have for all of our vertical construction. So I believe Mr. Care here is here to talk about Public Works.
Thank you.
The first project I have is Archdale Phase One. As of September the 10th, the county no longer has any participation in this project. So this will be the last update that you receive on this project. Bridge replacement, design build prep, the draft RFQ has been resubmitted and the consultant is currently working on the design build agreement. So when it goes to contract, this is the agreement that we will use with the contractor. Chatsworth Ditch Restoration, the pre-con was held on September the 1st and this should be a pretty short fuse project, so barring any major weather events, I think we can have this wrapped up here in the next couple of weeks as well. Clemson Terrace Strangish Study, the, as of when this was submitted, we were waiting on the draft scope from the engineering consultant. We've since received the final scope and it's going to be sent to Administration for approval probably tomorrow. Eagle Chandler Creek Trail, Phase Two, Michael Baker, who's our engineering consultant, the contract mod for the right-of-way acquisition has been completed and we're waiting on the surveyors to complete their work as well. Old Fort Multi-Use Path, the, when this is completed, we're waiting on DOT's permission to award. We've since received that and the contract has been sent to the low bidder for execution and then once we get it back, we'll send it to Administration for execution. Old Fort Sidewalk, we're waiting on DOT concurrence to award. We should have that any day now. They require some additional information based on the bids versus the estimates. So we provided that to them. They're reviewing that with Federal Highways and then we'll get that concurrence back here shortly. US 78 Phase 2A, the existing box culvert in Ridgeville is under demolition right now. It's nearly complete. I would expect that this rain is going to set us back about a week or two. The dam system that they've created so they can construct it has been overtopped and will be compromised for the next several days until the rain stops and we can get it rebuilt. So that is a slight setback, but nothing that they can't work through. US 78 Phase 2B, the clearing and grubbing is now done. If you drive through that area, it looks a whole lot different than it did just a few weeks ago. And they've actually started on a lot of the earthwork, digging the new ditches, bringing the new fill. So that's going on and the utility work continues. With that, I'd be more happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Careher.
Thank you.
Now, council with bated breath awaits this day in history. Here, what do you got for us, Mr. Harper?
Well, first, good evening, council. Glad to be here. And actually, I do have one. On September 20th, 1853, Elijah Graves Otis sold his first horse machine with an automatic safety brake. We now know that as an elevator. And if you recall, back in the 1850s, most buildings were only six stories tall. Because of the invention, now we have skyscrapers. So with that is my moment in history.
Thank you, sir.
Second, a couple of quick ones. Second phase of Stratton Two Capers, we're working on the final bid documents, hope to get that out on the streets by the end of the month. We talked about the well springs at both Coniflow Well and also at the Reevesville Well. Those both have actually been completed. We're doing a close evaluation of the electrical systems to see whether or not can we put in emergency generators there. Edisto Tribal Council, we did award that project finally, hallelujah, to Chicago Bridge and Iron. They have, we had a pre-construction meeting earlier this week and actually late last week, and we've been ready to have a notice received toward the end of this month. We've done a preliminary scope for Johnson Street repairs. We've sent that to DOT. This is where we've got those dips going on due to previous sewer installation. And so we're actually correcting that. We will be doing a flowable fill and actually doing an overlay on top of that to correct those problems there. Lower, which was a, Lower Dorchester waits for the treatment plant, both the expansion and the rerate. We're currently, hopefully get this week to put out to bid the request for proposal for C Mar Construction Management at Risk. Should be going out this week. Maple Street relocates, we do have some plan revisions going on due to some additional discoveries that we've found, which we've been trying to get that line, those lines in. Pump Station 115, we've got a, we've scheduled a kickoff meeting. That design is actually underway now. Pump Station 117, we are on the final completion of those. So we've been focusing in on St. George projects. We have, Pump Station 72, just to kind of skip down, we've actually started conducting a geotech study to see what we can actually put there. This is next to At Asbury Ridge High School. Summer Haven Water Improvement, which was a project that was dear to my heart, we're still looking at, we've run the flow data, we received that, and now we've working on the final design of that. And with the Wyndham Woods Reach project, we have actually acquired all the real estate. That project is out to bid and we're looking for a great bid. With that, any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Harper, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And before I throw this to Mr. Ward, I'd be remiss if I didn't offer our honorees over here the opportunity to leave if they would like to. So you, you are welcome to do so. Don't want to put you on the spot. It is a relatively short meeting, but nonetheless, you've been working all day, so you are free to leave. I didn't, I didn't want to do it until you heard Mr. Harper's, this day in history though, so. Again, you're gonna hang with us, are you? Okay, I put you on the spot. Sorry about that. Next is County Administrator's time. Mr. Ward.
Mr. Chairman and Council, I have a couple of items for your consideration. The first is a request for approval to amend the 2021 County Council meeting calendar to change the location of the October 18th, 2021 meeting from the Willyard Davis Council Chambers in St. George to the Somerville County Council chambers while renovations are completed. Ask for your approval this amendment.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I, I have one, one brief one, and have we figured out a, a way to get that PDB meeting from a planning standpoint so that we, okay. Is that, is that, will that be included in this or is that just going to be a separate?
So that, that PDB meeting, what we'd look to do is use the courthouse.
Okay.
And the jury assembly room very specifically that's set up similar to chambers.
I mean, but is that part of what?
It doesn't have to be.
Okay. All right. Very good. That's all I got.
Thank you. Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise their hand.
Aye.
It is, excuse me, six in favor, one absent. Mr. Ward.
Next item I have for consideration is the request for approval to reimburse the disaster fund, $88,611 for COVID-19 related expenditures incurred to date, but not reimbursed, as well as to obligate an additional $21,242,153 from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund for eligible uses. We included in your packet a number of items. One item that I want to speak to very specifically is the amount of $10 million for expanding internet coverage into areas currently underserved or unserved. Our plan is to put out a request for proposals and we expect that amount to be reduced, but would like to set aside that amount. At this point, we know at least three different vendors plan to propose to respond to that.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise their hand.
Aye.
Six in favor, one absent. And thank you, Mr. Ward. Next, appointments to boards and commissions. Mr. Ward, did we have anything specific on this? No. Okay, very good. All right. Then County Attorney's time. Mr. Frampton.
Mr. Chairman, I only have one item for your consideration. That would be adoption of a resolution approving the assessment rolls as set forth in the assessment, I'm, I'm sorry, approving the assessments as set forth in the assessment rolls of the Summers Corner Improvement District. Request adoption of the resolution approving the assessments.
So move. Second. All right, we have motions and seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise their hand.
Aye.
Six in favor, one absent. And Mr. Frampton, anything else, sir? One more motion, please.
Our motion will adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion adjourned a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Aye, six in favor, one absent. I know it is shocking, ladies and gentlemen, but.
Make it over last.
We are adjourned. Thank you and please drive carefully.